I will call to order the adjourned meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville, and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, and the Victorville Water District. Before we get into our regular business, I do have a special presentation. It's declaring July as Parks and Rec Month. Actually, this will be accepted by members of our Community Services Department. Parks and Rec used to be what was known as, now is Community Services. And I would like to call to receive this proclamation, Eros Tiveros, Stuart Weaver, It is with a great deal of appreciation that I present this proclamation on behalf of the City of Victorville, declaring July as Parks and Recreation Month. Having been in the city for about 32 years, I can attest to the fact that we do have the best parks, the best recreation services of any city anywhere. And so, once again, I would like to present this to you as you represent your fellow employees and members of the workforce. Thank you very much, and I'm going to allow you to say a few words on behalf of Parks and Rec.
Thank you. I'm David Coleman, Recreation Supervisor, and Parks and Rec is all about creating community. And it's done through a science of well-designed parks and programs that are designed to get people out of the house and focus on what we have in common. And when we do that, we create a strong community. And so, that's what our mission is, and that's what our goal is, and that's what makes Victorville a wonderful place.
First item on the agendas for all the entities that I call a meeting to order for is public comment, people wishing to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. And you're limited to three minutes. I have three cards. The first one is Robert Myers.
What do I do? Can you hear me? Okay. I'm here kind of representing the west, or the south half of Victorville that live south of La Mesa, that is not being worked on. Six months ago, when I called your engineer, Hiram, he laughed at me and said that it would never be out this long. It's not even been worked on. I spent an hour and a half at the fire departments today, and they are saying that they are spending extra time going around because of the blockage at King Ranch in La Mesa, Elivato in La Mesa, and Pacoima in La Mesa. I asked the engineer six months ago if he can just open up the intersections so that we can get to the north side of Victorville without having to drive all over. I'm paying for my kid's gas, my wife's gas, and there's only one entrance into our track, which I don't think is legal, to tell you the truth, because if there was an emergency, we couldn't all get out at the right time. And the fire department said, "Come here tonight and tell you," that they are spending a little extra time getting around the La Mesa blockage at the intersections. Now, La Mesa used to be the most beautiful road in Victorville, and now they're going to cut it all up, and it's going to be like Hasprilla Roads. But, there's no reason why that intersection should not be opened. And it's not legal, I don't believe, and the fire department, I didn't go to the Sheriff's Department yet, but the fire department said they are being held up because of the intersections being closed. So, two minutes of having to go around could mean a matter of life and death to a little kid that's choking. I just don't understand. I'm a 32-year union construction that's retired, and 10 years with my own license, and I don't understand why they can't open just the intersection. Hiram said he's afraid that the road will collapse. There was a tractor on the intersection all weekend from the City of Victorville putting in a water pipe. It didn't collapse. I know how things work. He's an engineer, but I know how things work. When water leaks out of a pipe, it causes a sinkhole, okay? It doesn't mean the rest of the pipes are leaking and are going to cause sinkholes. That road's been there forever. The sinkholes are where the pipes were ruptured. Now, the pipes are not ruptured at the intersections. It's not going to collapse, and I just feel that we should have a way out of our housing tract. And the rest of the road can stay undone until the contractor you guys hired gets the material that needs to be done, because that's what's holding up the project, right?
You have 15 seconds left.
Okay. When I bid a project, I always make sure I can get the material before I bid the job. All right, this contractor don't have it, so we get to wait longer. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll make sure that the city engineer, or public works director, or both get together with you. He's right here. He'll get to you before the end of the meeting. Dorothy Miller?
Dorothy Miller. I was sure glad we found money for the police department, because we need police and fire both. I don't know where we found it, but we found it. I think it's wonderful. Now, we got rid of the golf people. All the golf people's gone, and we're going to have all that extra money. Oh, I sure hope we can get eucalyptus put through. I mean, this is ridiculous. And then, we need to go back to the county and get our tax money up here, pay for things that has to be done. Bear Valley Road is a disaster. You try driving out it, you're tearing your cars up. For what? We don't have any money. Well, we're going to have to start working on getting money and taking care of the money and finances properly, and we won't have this problem we have now. And things got to straighten out, one way or the other, or we're, like I said before, down the tubes. The city gets nothing. The airport gets everything. We need to take care of this city if we're going to live here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Norm Miller.
Eric, council members, I guess we're ganging up on you again today. I just wanted to mention, I've called a couple, three times to the graffiti line, and I understand that, you know, the budget's the way it is, but this has been before the budget's been changed. And we've got graffiti on top of graffiti now. And I guess we've got two different groups in here, because the first one was in black, second one now is in blue, and that's on the school speed limit sign on Sycamore. We're also getting more graffiti on Sycamore between Cobalt and Veilwood, and we're getting it on Topaz, north of Sycamore, and we're getting it on Cobalt. I think it's Cobalt, north of Sycamore. So, it's coming and coming, and I understand you've got a problem, but I think if we call two or three times, maybe we should get some response on that. I don't know what the holdup's been, but whatever, that would be great if we could do that. And I have a question, if it can be answered. And I don't know how you care about this, but I noticed in the newspaper, they're talking about they want to get a bond, $40 million bond, I think it was, for the water department. And my main question here is, if they do that, who's going to pay for that bond? Is this going to be another standby fee, or is it just going to raise our water rates to pay for it? Maybe somebody can get back to me on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak under Item 1, Public Comment? Hearing none, we'll go into our regular meeting. And the first is our Library Board of Trustees' agenda. We don't have any revisions. We do have a public hearing, and the public hearing is for the budget. And I would like to take all the budgets, because we have five budgets, or five resolutions for the budgets, and this for the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Airport, Redevelopment Agency, Victorville Water District, and the City Council. And they all have the resolutions. And so, I would like to open up the public hearing for all of the agendas that, or budgets that I outlined. And at this time, I would like you to call the public hearing, or open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against any one of the Items 3 on each, on all of the, either the Library Board, Southern California Logistics, Redevelopment Agency, Victorville Water, or City Council, please come to the podium. Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we do have discussion on budget.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it is my pleasure to once again present the budget to you. This is, if it is passed tonight, will be the first on-time budget for this city in the last four years because of a variety of issues that we've experienced over that time. I would like to thank Adele Mosier, who's Assistant Director in Finance, for her assistance with putting together this budget. Especially thank Francine Millander, who's here with us tonight. Adele is unable to be here tonight. She is, her husband is ailing, and although she can't hear me now, I know that staff will let her know that Gordon is in our prayers. I'd also like to thank Francine, as I said. She got the unenviable task of playing the bad guy with the department heads as they were in the budget meetings. She has the most history of our budget and has been coordinating it for several years now. And I really thank her for that, for taking on that role with such zeal as the department heads can attest to. Also, Terry Ellis, who also, we gave the night off. She's been working hard to put the CIP together. And also, Josie Trevino, who is not here as well. She coordinated all of our personnel schedules, which is sort of the first step of the budget, is to get the personnel schedules together. I want to thank the department heads for their hard work. We did have a tough time again this year, as has been documented, and kind of at the very last, we asked for a little bit more savings, and they were able to come up with it, and I thank them for their hard work, not only throughout this fiscal year, saving money, especially towards the end of the year, but also in finding savings so that we could get a balanced budget before you tonight. And then, lastly, thank our employees, and I'll get to that a little bit more, some of the, some of the pain that the employees of the city have had to endure over the last couple of years. Brandon, can you go to the next slide for me? Okay, now I've got control. Thank you, Brandon. It's been tough. You know, if you read the news reports, it seems like one day, things are looking up, and the next day, things are looking down, and sometimes in the same, on the same page of the newspaper, you would see that things are looking up and down at the same time, somehow. We are happy to report, and I didn't think I would ever say this in Victorville, we are happy to report that sales taxes are flat, that they've stopped going down, at least for the time being. It seems, sounds a little bit strange, but they've been declining for a couple of years now, so we're happy to see that things seem to be leveling off in the sales tax department. Unfortunately, property tax is actually down about 17% this year, and part of that is because of lags in the escrow accounts. If someone leaves a home, the escrow account is typically about a year forward, and so that escrow account is still, still pays those taxes. So, folks that have stopped paying the taxes, actually, typically, that money is held in the escrow, so we still receive it for a year. So, that's why, different than sales tax, it's actually still going down on that. Just Mike.
Yeah, Doug, I have a question on that. You said, you mentioned 17%, and I saw some different percentages with others, agencies talking about the county. The 17%, is that, what does that apply to up here? Just Victor Valley, or the City of Victorville?
That is specifically Victorville, all of Victorville. Victorville receives, in the past, before we dissolved our subsidiary districts, Victorville received no property tax.
Right.
Through the triple flip and through the dissolution of the Fire, Parks and Rec, and Sanitary District, we now receive, as a city, property taxes, and that is specifically for the city. There's also other numbers that you'll probably see for the RDA and for the VITA project area, but those are certain segments of the city that will have a different, a different number in there, just based on, on what properties are included in that calculation.
Do you anticipate the property, this decrease to table out this year? I mean, or?
What we've been told is to expect this coming fiscal year to be the worst, that this is the bottom. We hope those reports are right. We hope that the county is accurate in telling us that, but we really won't know that until we get closer to the end of the fiscal year and start to see some estimations and potentially see, hopefully, some increases in our property tax over what this estimate is.
One other question. I was trying to get this information from League of California Cities, and I couldn't get ahold of anybody that knew for sure, but the ballot measure now secures our redevelopment, I assume, is language in there, that secures our RDA money. Like this last year, they stole 13 million out of the Redevelopment Agency for the state. That money is gone. It's not like, we were taking it, and we're going to pay you back, right? That's gone 100%.
That's correct.
Okay, and then, in the future, assuming this ballot initiative in November passes, then, from the future, we'll never be able to get, at least those monies won't be rated anymore by the state.
That proposition, I don't remember if it's, if it's '20 or '22, I haven't had a chance to, to review exactly how, how that affects the redevelopment agencies. My understanding was that it was more geared towards some gas tax funds and other transportation funding.
No, no, no. There is a line in there on representing RDA, but I don't know, that's when I called the league, and I tried to get more definition on that. I couldn't get anybody that would tell me anything, but it's on the ballot, so I'd like a report on that, at least to the council and to the public, what that initiative is worth to the cities.
Absolutely, and I would imagine, as has, as this council has done in the past, we would pass a resolution in support of that proposition.
That's good. Okay.
We kept in mind when putting this budget together, the council's priorities, public safety, economic growth, and quality of life, and I've got a little bit more detail on each one of those things. Public safety, the current levels were preserved for both police and fire. There was a bit of a reduction in the fire contract, but that was more the administrative side of the fire, not the suppression side of fire. It gives you a little bit of the details. And then, other services that are part of our overall public safety category are listed there on the screen. As we've cut, following your priorities over the last four years, you can see that our public safety percentage of our general fund continues to grow. And what I would caution you is that in the future, we hope that this is the last year that we have to cut. But if it's not, the darker blue section there, which historically we've cut before cutting public safety, is getting smaller and smaller. So, to the extent that we have to, to cut an overall number from the general fund, the percentage from other departments that share that general fund is getting greater and greater as we move forward. Economic growth, we have the industrial wastewater treatment facility completion as part of our CIP. We have the La Mesa and Esqually interchange as part of our CIP, and we are expecting completion of land acquisition for that project and start of construction as part of this, this year's budget. And then, we continue to move forward on the Hydrate Corridor, and there's an item later on the agenda that discusses that in greater detail, so I won't go into that. Quality of life issues, we are undergoing in this budget a citywide road rehab, which includes essentially 2.35 million square feet of roads, citywide. We do have the La Mesa Road storm drain repair, as the gentleman brought up earlier tonight, which is scheduled to start construction one week from today, and is estimated to take about three months to complete. We are also preserving programs in, that are important to the council, library, recreation, parks, golf courses, and graffiti removal. Just as a summary, we do have a balanced budget of $308 million citywide. You can see the revenue numbers there, how they break out. Expenditures are mostly operating expenditures, $182.5 million worth, and then the CIP is $80.5 million. Just to give you a sort of pictorial comparison of that overall budget and how it compares to years past, as you can see, we ramped up as construction and the housing market boomed, and we have been cutting ever since. Our CIP, as I mentioned earlier, is about just over $80 million. All of these projects are contingent on funding. In the past, typically, we would put probably more projects in the CIP than we anticipated we could complete, and that had a little bit of an elevation factor to the numbers. But, as always, the CIP is contingent entirely on funding. If funding doesn't come in for, for any of these projects, they don't get built. Again, back to the pictures, just an idea for operating revenues by type, how it's split out. As you can see, 32% of our, of our overall revenues are, are taxes, charges for services, 26.6. I don't need to read every number to you, you can see it just fine. Expenditures, this is essentially all of the city's agencies and associated agencies, component units, all in one picture. They don't share funding, and so, a lot of this, although it's informational in nature, you couldn't take money that you had collected for special funds and then spend them on, say, general government or the redevelopment agency. Our component units, the Water District budget is $90 million this year. That does include a potential bond issue that we are exploring right now to see what the rates might be. It is not contingent on that bond issue. The Water District will be just fine, whether we get it or not. It is a preference, and it would be, if ultimately, we do head that direction, of course, it would come back to this council for, for approval, one way or the other. It's not being recommended at this time, until we have some more numbers put together. And that is not for water operations, it's actually for our wastewater operation. We have created a wastewater enterprise fund that combines the former sanitary district funds, along with funds from water, that they would gain from the sale of reclaimed water. Essentially made it a separate entity, under Water, if you will. Maybe that's not a good term, but, under the Water District, as part of a combined, combined unit, component unit of, of the city and the Water District. Over the last year and into next fiscal year, the Water District, through the cuts that all of the employees have endured, both city and Water District, former Water District employees, as well as efficiencies that have been gained by Mr. Lamson and his staff, have been able to save enough money that there will be no rate increase. Contingent on council approval, although I don't think anyone is going to jump up and down and demand a rate increase, we can have a rate pass this year and have no increase during this, this coming fiscal year. RDA, 38 million, SCLA, 40 million, and then the library, which is part of the general fund, but a separate legal entity, are all listed there. Our general fund, which is the area that gets the most press as far as struggling to maintain, it's always difficult to, to maintain services as revenues decline. We are projecting revenues of $46.4 million, and then, based on the reserve policy that this council approved on June 1st, we are establishing that 5% reserve and using the rest of the reserves in order to provide the services that are most important to this council. The total of those two is the $51 million, and just for the, for the council and the public's interest, there are no CIP projects budgeted within the general fund. It is, it is all operating expenditures. Just to give you a picture, because although the general fund was listed on that first slide, it, the numbers in the general fund were sufficiently smaller than the total that it almost looked flat, but I wanted the council to be aware, as well as the public, that, you know, our general fund has definitely seen the hills and valleys of this economy. And as you see, our highest amount was in fiscal year '09, just over $66 million, and we are down to $51 million operating in the general fund this coming fiscal year. So, you probably have questions. Some of this you already know, based on last year's budget, but how did we achieve some of these reductions? This year, after the attrition of last year, both the layoffs and any natural attrition, resignations, retirements, those sorts of things that occurred, departments were again asked to cut up to 10%, rather than giving each department a hard figure that you must cut X amount. We requested that they review their budgets very carefully and come up with ways that they could save an amount between 5 and 10%. And we had the hope that enough would find areas of savings, that it would be, end up being enough, and that's ultimately what happened, and where we, quote, "found the money." It was not found, it was, it was recovered through hard work by your department heads. This is down quite a bit from last year, in which we requested a 32% decrease from, from all departments, except for public safety. We had, again, have elimination of any, or reductions to subscriptions, publications, the sort of ancillary items that, that aren't 100% necessary. We've limited overtime wherever possible, and as this council is aware, we outsourced the golf course to realize some savings there. Reductions affecting personnel, and this is where I go back to thanking our employees in their willingness and ability to take some of this burden on themselves, not that they had a choice, but they have, those that have remained, have remained and kept in good spirits for the most part, and are riding out the storm with, with us and with you. And things such as merit increases, cost of living, stability pay, tuition reimbursement, they didn't get any last year, they're not getting any next year, we'll have essentially 24 months of no pay raises of any type for, for our employees. As with last year, we've reduced cell and auto allowances in the 401A program for, for management-level employees. We've had a hiring freeze. We, in fact, because of that hiring freeze, ended up transferring 13 employees from one department to another in order to fill vacancies where, where necessary. We've also had increased medical costs, and that probably, you folks noticed that as well as we did, because I know that some of you are on the medical plan. But ultimately, for the employees, that results in a net salary decrease. As the medical costs go up, and we don't increase the fringe, that results in money coming out of their pocket. And just to give you an idea, the amount of fringe is $626 monthly. That amount has not changed since July 1st, 2003. There was a few years where there was some subsidies paid on behalf of the employees, so they didn't see the, the full difference, but, but at this point, they're paying the full difference between whatever their medical costs are and, and that fringe. Health Net Family, which is, Health Net is our most-used plan, that's why I chose this as an example. Rates went up 16.7%. All of that rate increase was passed on to the employees, and it was a difficult decision to do that, and ultimately, it's your decision as well. But, the city manager and I discussed it and determined that rather than essentially laying off additional employees, we wanted to spread that, that cost out. It's a tough decision to make, because ultimately, that affects morale. But, it, we didn't want to cost jobs in order to, to save, save dollars on a monthly basis. For the Health Net Family increase, that would be about $216 monthly, and it is effectively, for our lowest-paid employees, clerk typists, maintenance worker ones, about an 8% decrease to their, to their salary, in essence. And it's unfortunate, but, you know, we are, we do continue to work together as employees to, to shoulder this, this load and to get us through this, this tough time.
Doug?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes?
Yeah, right in the area, I'm not sure exactly where it is, being here, but I want to touch back on something that I mentioned several times in the past. We're in a high re-freege now, we've been there for a couple, almost two years, and certainly going to stay for at least a year longer or more. I would like us to look towards this defined benefit versus defined contribution retirement system. There's been a number of articles about the state's resistance to it, and other municipalities have been looking at it. Now, I don't know how they make that transition, except you've got new employees coming that won't be under the old contracts, and so I'm asking this council to consider the idea of going into that defined contribution, or at least looking at it as a way for all of our future employees to go that, so that in the future, some other councils doesn't get bankrupt through the retirement system. It's just, I think that's the way to go, it ought to be that way, it's fair, and there's a clean break in here at the moment where we might be able to handle that without people slopping in one way or the other.
You are absolutely right. In fact, you and I have talked about this probably every other month or so for the last year. When we last talked, and I'm just sharing this for the council, I know you already know this, when we last talked, I've committed to taking a look at that. We aren't doing any hiring right now, we don't anticipate any hiring soon, so we do have a little bit of time. And rather than try to squeeze that in while we were trying to get the budget done, I've committed to you, Mike, and I'll commit to the rest of the council with the authority from Mr. Cox, of course, that we will put together a report this fall, as we have the time to put together a logical, thorough report on the differences, the benefits, the costs of each. But it's definitely something that should be studied during this time when we aren't hiring, so that it would affect new employees as they come on, whenever we start to dig our way out of this recession.
It might even be an ability to have a self-funded pool, I mean, if there's a problem with a big regional pool, for so few employees initially, and then begin to ask other cities, maybe within the county or the region, to join us, or, you know.
We are involved with several different risk management pools for both employment liability as well as general liability. There may already be a defined benefit risk pool that we can take a look at as an option, and we'll certainly include that in the report if anything like that's available. Lastly, this has been much publicized, I wanted to make sure that the council had up-to-date numbers with exactly where we are regarding reductions in workforce. As you can see, there are total number of layoffs through the end of this fiscal year, our most recent round of layoffs takes effect June 30th, although many of the employees are off on administrative leave by their choice through that time period, but the total number is 97 employees laid off, although a small percentage of that was voluntary, they are still considered layoffs in the most strict sense of the term. We didn't have any, or many, I should say, position changes, demotions as part of demotion in lieu of layoff this year. We had quite a bit of restructuring that occurred last year, and the council's well aware of that. Ultimately, 190 staff members have been affected by some sort of a layoff, demotion, change in title, or resignation, or terminations, retirements. So I just wanted the council to have the most up-to-date information. That concludes the presentation, I know all the department heads are here, if you have any questions regarding specific items within their budgets.
Current level of employees?
Oh, man, I believe we're just under 400 total. Yeah, just under 400.
Question, Mike?
Is 190, all the layoffs, we're through now?
Yes, that is correct.
We believe.
Pardon me?
We believe.
No, we'll make it work.
Yeah, well, we agree, we'll make it work, but I want to caution the council, one of the earlier slides, I don't want to jump around too much, but one of the earlier slides referred to the fact that we are using $4.7 million in reserves in order to balance this budget. So in essence, between now and June 30th of next year, we need to see revenue increases and expenditure decreases that equal $4.7 million, or we'll have to make further cuts of some type.
The only, you have the revenues are your property tax and sales tax for your general fund.
That makes up probably, I want to say 70% of the general fund, 65% of the general fund is sales tax and property tax.
With the other?
The others, probably easier to look at page, I believe it's number nine.
Page nine.
Page nine, and that will give you a full accounting of all the revenues in the general That's actually all revenues altogether. Page 15 is just the general fund revenues. That gives you an idea for everything. Certainly, property tax and sales tax are by far the largest contributors.
I forgot the other, the permits and licenses and all that.
Right, right.
As Doug knows, I've been on him all of last week, requesting drafts of the budget, trying to figure out ways, and inasmuch as I know we have professionals doing this, and I appreciate everything that they're doing, I obviously didn't want to see any cuts to public safety, and I thank you all for finding a way to make sure that that didn't happen. I think unfortunately, had that been proposed, I would have had to vote against the adoption of the budget tonight. But because you were successful in being able to find that, all city departments, everyone stepped up to the plate to be able to do that, and I'm very appreciative of that. But in our conversations going back and forth and even suggesting that we might borrow money to fund public safety, and understanding that we may see an even yet worse fiscal year in 2010, 2011, with revenues coming into the general fund, I think we definitely have more work to do, and I would hope that staff would continue to work in that regard to make sure that as we see those obligations come at us for fiscal year 2011, 2012, that we're not, you all are not faced with that situation again. I shared with Mr. Cox yesterday, I drove into City Hall, and I've done this on several occasions, and actually drove the parking aisle of several city-owned vehicles that don't seem to be being used. And yet, we've churned in 40-plus vehicles, and we have probably approximately 30 to 40 more sitting out there that don't seem to be used on a daily basis, and I don't know why. But to me, that seems an area that we could look to save again in the future. Obviously, things were good in the past, we spent a lot of money, bought a lot of vehicles, leased a lot of vehicles, for whatever reason, we did it, we did it. But we need to reevaluate that, because there's just way too many vehicles sitting in our city parking lot, and they're not being used. In fact, they're very dirty, a lot of them, I think comment was cobwebs coming off of them, just not sure what they're all doing sitting there. The other thing is, as I mentioned several months ago when we went through the mid-year review, is looking at outsourcing, and I appreciate all of your work, Doug, and with staff, on looking at doing that with the golf courses, and I think that was a successful venture, and I look forward to the benefits of that with respect to our budget going forward. But I think we need to look beyond the golf courses, and, you know, maintenance of parks is just one area I know I brought up before, but I think we need to look at that, and I'm sure there's more that we can look at. But I just, I think that we're going to be faced, although I know it is your position that this will prevent us from having to do layoffs this next year, you know, based upon the lag and what we see from the county, revenues coming in, things continue to churn out worse than they do better. I'm just concerned that staff's going to be put in a position spring of next year with the same situation. And so I understand this has been a tough haul to get through this, and I commend everyone, Doug, you and everybody that you've worked with, as well as all departments, for doing what they needed to do to cut. But unfortunately, I'm concerned that this is not the end of it, and I think we need to be proactive in looking at this and figuring out ways to be able to deal with this in the future, because I don't know that this will be the last year that we have to deal with this, and I think that we need to do all that we can to prepare ourselves for the 2011, 2012 fiscal year, even as we enter into the 2010, 2011 fiscal year.
Thank you for those comments, Councilmember McEckern. Although the department heads haven't heard this, I guess they'll hear it here now, I've already talked with purchasing staff about possibly a series of RFPs in preparation for the worst, so that we don't need to try to do this all next spring, essentially using the fall to look at options, to compare what those RFPs come back with for costs compared to what it costs the city to do those things. It's typically long-term, not preferable to contract out services. However, based on what the numbers look right now, we will, you will likely see a series of RFPs, and unfortunately, it will probably be reported as us contracting out those services. That's not the intent, the intent will be to compare the cost of those services, the quality of those services under contract versus what it costs us to do those things now, so that we can be prepared if in fact, in the spring, we do need to make further cuts.
I would also like to thank everyone that participated in the preparation of our budget. I appreciate receiving a balanced budget, although I appreciate it, perhaps others in the community don't, or don't understand what it means to us to finally get a balanced budget. And, you know, to all the employees and everyone involved, the department heads that went through all these challenges in the last 18 months or so, and there were challenges, they were not easy to overcome, but here we are with a balanced budget, and I appreciate that. The general fund is, to me, appears to be the key to this whole thing. It was like $51 million this year, $34 million goes to public safety, and I support that wholeheartedly. Only leaves about $16 million to provide engineering, public work, and all these other services that are also vital to the community. So I understand what you're saying, and it's something we really, really need to look at and find ways to bring more revenue, do that if we can, or find other ways to reduce that other portion of the general services that are used from the general fund. But I did, I was concerned this morning, when I went out to the Republican Club yesterday, and I was real proud because we had a, finally had a balanced budget, and I read the newspaper this morning, and it just, I don't know, I just didn't feel like it was the right story. Specifically, there was a story about calling the graffiti, and they were told they were going to be laid off and so on, and I understand we have a response to that, and I don't know who will, we do have a written response, but I would like to hear from, well, Amher, he's the author of this report, and I think the graffiti was also mentioned earlier in our public hearing, so a public comment.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember, yeah, I did read the article, and I prepared a response, and I put it in front of you, I will not read the whole response back to you, but basically, I've talked to my staff, I don't know if anybody had talked to, anybody had talked to my staff that said they're being laid off, and there is nobody being laid off in my staff in graffiti, in fact, we don't have any layoffs in my department. But if somebody did say that, you know, I apologize if somebody from my department said that, but I don't think that happened in my department. In fact, what we've done is we've reorganized, the budget reduction that you show has to do with streamlining, has to do with reduction in overhead and management, we've laid off managers previously, and we have some managers that retired, so what we've done is taken that savings and reduced the number of overhead, the staff that we have for overhead. What that's done is, what we have now is same level of service, in fact, more because we added another crew to pick up, pick up all the trash that we see around the city. So I was surprised at reading the article, because all the stuff that we have in there is self-explanatory. The other thing, when we saw, for example, some of the reduction that you see in animal control, we're trying to go after grant money, so instead of using our money to spend your program, there is grant monies available, and we'll be focused on getting those grant monies to fund those programs. And as far as operations of Auto Shop is concerned, we've had a certain number of cars that were leased and they went back, we also have golf courses that we are no longer paying the cars for, so there was an obvious reason to reduce the staff. We didn't lay people off, but as people retired, we did not hire anybody else.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, Council, I just want to add that we actually have three different departments that handle graffiti. We don't openly advertise this, because we do have a graffiti hotline, we have a graffiti hotline crew, but John Gargan, who's the Director of Community Services, also has a trash graffiti crew that goes out every day. No one on his crew has been laid off because they're very concerned about graffiti in the public buildings, and he also was very concerned, made inquiry into his staff, and of course, received the same information, that the calls that come in can go either directly to engineer graffiti hotline, public works. He was trying to find out, you know, if maybe a concerned employee has, did not know, or had a suspicion they were going to get laid off. He's convinced it was none of his employees, and none of his employees are getting laid off. Sean McGlade, as you know, that he is dealing with the engineering department, has a graffiti removal program for the streets and sign control, very important because we have these individuals that can cause a problem when they graffiti up the traffic safety signs, and may cause a problem with traffic, and so therefore, they receive information from, also from public works or the graffiti hotline. They didn't receive any information, they didn't receive any call, they didn't have any contacts, and there's no one in that program being laid off. So it's kind of a mystery, but that aside, we hope the public doesn't panic and believe that somehow that that program is being ignored. I have been told recently, however, that there appears to be more graffiti than we've had, and that may be the case, we have a report that comes out, we'll be evaluating that, and if it's a problem, what we would simply ask all the citizens to do, please keep their eyes and ears open, and, you know, keep the graffiti hotline on the refrigerator or someplace close to the phone, and when they deem suspicious activities in that regard or see it, call, call us, we will get there as soon as possible, we'll have someone there. We have numbers that we call that are not public numbers for, depending upon what the situation is, and the police department, but they're not for traffic, they're not for the graffiti section, but they do give us a tremendous amount of help. And they are the agencies that generally run these guys down that are causing all the problems, and so we're closely with them. So if it's there, if people notice an increased amount, that's probably other reasons, not because we reduced our workforce or our budget amount, but it is important to the public, and it's important in the way the city looks, and it's important to a lot of people because the pride they take in the city, and then have this occur, and it's disheartening. So, you know, go ahead and call, and we will respond.
Um, Miller's, Bickamore, they called this morning and said that they've called four times, still not removed.
Well, we'll absolutely check into it.
They didn't speak to anyone, they left a message on the machine, excuse me, on the machine.
We will make sure that there's a response, we'll check to make sure those are recorded calls, and so we can tell exactly who called, when they called, and if they left a message, we'll make a determination if there was a follow-up.
It's near the school.
Okay.
It's near the hallway.
Any other comments?
And we do appreciate- And we do appreciate them calling and letting us know when these things occur.
Any other comment from the council staff?
Only one comment, Ms. Mayor and Council. Doug indicated that based upon the cutbacks that we have had and the savings, there was a water rate increase that had been approved, that we're going to hold that off, and so that will not be increased also because of your activities on the Victor Valley Wastewater Authority, and because of our staff involvement and cooperating with the other staffs. There had also been an approval to increase the sewer rate, and the increase that's contemplated will be probably cut in half. We're hoping that that'll be a small increase, not the one that's actually already been approved. We went through all the hearings that were required, and that rate was a two-year rate approved last year, but we know that this economy is affecting everyone, and we're doing our best to pass the savings on to the general public that pays these bills.
We do have Resolution Number LBT 10-001, Resolution Number SCLA 10-001, Resolution Number R 10-003, Resolution Number VWD 10-009, and City Council Resolution Number 10-063. Now we entertain a motion for approval.
Second. Oh, it's not working.
Oh, no. Second.
We're getting back to the right presentation in just a moment here. We just need to get away from the budget presentation and back to the system.
Oh, yeah, here we go.
I'll vote yes, Carolie.
Thank you, Ms. Almond.
Let's vote.
I think you guys have something going with me.
Well, it was me too last.
This is the second week. Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. I see.
Next is the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Agenda. And Mr. Cowell, who's the chair, is not here. Mike, you're the vice chair.
Any revisions?
No revisions.
So we've had our public comments, there's no action on the Airport Authority. Was it the rail? There's no action on the rail.
Next is the RDA. We don't have any revisions. We had the public hearing on item number three. Item number four is the consent calendar.
Approval?
How did you do that?
I don't know.
Second.
Item number five, request to adopt Resolution Number R 10-004. This resolution involves the finding of the use of low and moderate income housing funds to be allocated.
Approval?
Item six, presentation and request for approval to accept County Neighborhood Stabilization Program, funding the amount of $6,500,000 for the rehab of Hillcrest Core Departments. There are no revisions. Item number three, we've gone through that. Item four, presentation and request for approval of change order number eight to increase Kelly's underground construction contract for reclaimed water line to the elevated tank by $35,290.15.
Approval?
Second.
City Council Agenda, there is a revision to item number nine?
Yes, that's correct. There is additional information on item number nine that was submitted by the Town of Apple Valley.
February item three. Item number four is the consent calendar.
Move for approval?
Second.
Item five, request to ratify the Cal ID contract for the period of July 1, 2010 through June 30, 2020.
Move for approval?
Second.
Item number six, request to ratify the memorandum of understanding between the City of Victorville and the Victor Elementary School District and the Victor Valley Union High School District for the period of July 1, 2010 through June 30, 2011. Item seven, request to approve the actions listed on the staff report regarding the grant of right-of-way enlistments on city-owned parcels in reference to the La Mesa-Nisqually I-15 interchange.
Approval?
Item number eight, request to approve the possession and use agreement between the First Assembly of God, Victorville, and the city in reference to the La Mesa-Nisqually I-15 interchange for the completion of a traffic signal at Nisqually and Balsam Road.
Move for approval?
Second. So Sean, when will that be done now? Tomorrow?
And we have somebody here that can. Item number nine, it's a request for the council to provide direction to work with Los Angeles Metropolitan Transportation Authority and Caltrans in developing a partnership agreement for environmental work on the High Desert Corridor. We do have a staff report.
Mr. Mayor, member of the council, the city manager and Mr. McGlade and I have been working, talking with Metro and with Caltrans about this item, and there seems to be a little bit of confusion. There was new additional information submitted by Mr. Henderson from Apple Valley requesting some modification to this item, to specifically insert Town of Apple Valley as part of this negotiation process. And just for clarity, the item that's before you tonight came about because Mr. McGlade and his staff have been pressing as quickly as possible to complete the EIR for the section that we're responsible for. Within the last few months, the members of the High Desert Corridor Joint Powers Authority have begun looking at this project and where logical termination points might be along the project between LA County and San Bernardino County. And just to clarify and hopefully alleviate any of Mr. Henderson's concerns that he expressed here, the purpose of this is not to set out a predefined negotiation strategy or to set out exactly what is or isn't going to happen should the council provide the direction that we're seeking. It has to do with the fact that when council previously had provided direction regarding this project, it was to move forward to get the EIR done and ultimately try to identify the funding to build the project. This is a new wrinkle. It's something that I think was contemplated originally, that at some point we may pass this off to a larger agency. I'm not suggesting that this is or isn't the time. The purpose of this is because Mr. McGlade and his staff are ready to move forward to award a contract on a firm, to a firm, to do that portion of the EIR. And in order to enter into this discussion, that would need to be temporarily put on hold, and that is contrary to the previous direction of the council, which was to move forward. So the purpose of this is to provide a little bit of information for the city council and have discussion amongst yourselves and decide if this new wrinkle is something that you would like Mr. McGlade or anyone else from staff to enter into this discussion and sort of put everything else on hold until it's determined how to best move forward, whether it's this partnership agreement or any other method, and bring that back to you for a final discussion and determination. So I wanted to alleviate any fears, you know, this isn't trying to keep Apple Valley out of the discussion, but it also isn't requesting that you direct Apple Valley staff to do anything. They certainly would be invited, they are part of the project, and we would like to see them in those meetings. This is more to provide specific direction to city staff as we face what could be a crossroads and need direction on which way to go.
First of all, I would urge the council not to pursue this at this time, to not join into this effort. I think the catalyst of information and the initiative needs to come from the metropolitan transit area in Los Angeles, not from our area. We've been at this a lot longer than the JPA. I was one of the first council members to sit on it, I think Ryan's sitting on it now. That with respect to the East-West is probably satisfactory for the moment. There is certainly the issue of funding, it's going to be coming at us in the future, but I have a whole list of concerns with respect to joining in on this at this time and participating. And when you looked at the, if you looked at the outline of the different points that they're going to consider in this agreement, there's a whole series of them, and I sent the council tonight, my list of just 10 of them, and I said that wasn't an exhaustive list, but it certainly was a list to begin with. Just for the record, let me go through some of my concerns tonight and ask the council not to indicate that we will or won't participate, but leave it open for the moment. One of them is that the, one of the suggestions is that we use whatever remaining of our federal monies, the 9.5 million, that that would go into some kind of a communal pot. That's dedicated to our segment of the project, and I think that I'll stay in control of this city council, how we use those resources at this time. Another area that concerns me is the definition of the project, the one that they are contemplating to put a full board commitment to is from the state 14 to the 15 across the 395. For our parochial interest, from the 395 to the 15 is certainly 100% first and foremost, but in addition to that, we have committed, and I think that is an extremely important commitment, to continue the project around to the state 18. So that loop of the project has not been articulated very well in the proposed agreement that might come out of this new board that would be configured. I'm very concerned about that, and I'm afraid that that would probably give lip to us too and not actually be a commitment. But for us, we're in this valley where a half a million, growing to a half a million and be a million in the next decade to 15 years, that back loop is extremely important. It'll give us access eventually in the future to the 10, and so for us, it's important. Where the East-West corridor, their importance is the 14 to the 15. Another area is I'm not sure what the restrictions are in Measure R for the Los Angeles County's transportation bonds. I don't know, if you take money, do you all of a sudden sell your soul? When you start taking money from the state and the federal government, there are restrictions built into that. I don't know what those are. Another one that I'm very concerned about is that the representation from this side will be handled by the supervisor, four seats on that committee by the supervisor, and most of this project from the 395 to the 15 is exclusively within purview of the City of Victorville. It affects our SCLA, it affects our redevelopment, it affects the growth and development there. I do not have the confidence that people other than the City of Victorville ought to be discussing those engineering and commitment and financial resources into that area of the E220. Another one, I didn't see any discussion with Dale Bonner. Dale Bonner is one of our parochial residents here, he knows everything about what we're about in terms of our transportation needs. He's probably the single most important state cabinet post individual in this state, and I don't see any major discussions with him. There probably has been some on the side, but why wasn't Victorville brought into any of those discussions? Because one of the anchor points is, to me, the single most important point in this E220 project area. Another one is they haven't even mentioned in here the Desert Express, what commitments there. I think if you're going to have a public-private partnership, one person that needs to sit at the table ought to be somebody that's building a $4 billion-plus, maybe up to $6 billion project anchored into this corridor, and there's no discussion or representation of that being a part of it, it's all the political, local political people. Another one was the stakeholders. Who are the stakeholders? I'd like to have a public list of those, not just one that's circulated among council members and council and county councils, but the public needs to know who those stakeholders are too. Remember, this E220 is going to be probably the first brand-new freeway designation in the state of California in over 40 years, thanks to our lustrous Jerry Brown. When he was governor before, he virtually destroyed our highway system. Now he's running for governor again. I hope we have the sense enough to remember where he came from and what he did to this state when he ran and was running the first time. He shut down the new construction in this state for 10 years, and now we're probably paying the price for much of those decisions even today as we sit here. But the E220 is a project that will address some of those issues. Certainly, if you think of a bigger vision than just us, a major event out of the Los Angeles area, whether it's natural or man-made, you need a major freeway artery to the backside of the mountains connecting the 14 to the 15 to the 10 eventually for millions of people to access. That part of the project is not a small thing. That's probably one of the catalysts that will help the state get their head in the game and say, hey, we really need the E220. But the Desert Express, that is a private project, for God's sakes. That's one that ought to be up there at the front end of this thing saying, hey, they're going to hit Victorville and turn the corner and run down the E220. They need to be at the table in discussions on these things here. I know they sent a letter out just recently, Mr. McEckern, I believe, asked some questions, and they addressed those to the council and everything. So we've got a response in that participation, but that's not, for me, there should be more involvement in that area. Another one is they mentioned that they would consider using the work that we had done. We've done a lot of work, millions of dollars of work, in fact. Okay, if you're not going to use it, are you going to pay Victorville back for that, all those man-hours and resources and time? I doubt it, but nevertheless, that would be a question in my mind, is that the resources that you might not use, pay us back for those, millions of dollars. And if you are going to use it all, just leave our staff on board. They're already in the trenches knowing what they're doing with the construction from the 395 to the 15. the 395 to the 15, and we'll begin to plan with Apple Valley in terms of looping around the other way. That, to me, if there's anything else, out of all the battles I may have with Apple Valley, I'm telling you right now, I'm supportive of the, I always have been and will continue to support that project from the 395. And that's the only designated project, officially designated product by both the state and the federal government. The rest of the project is still in concept form only. It's not at the same level that we are with respect to the federal and state's commitment to that. And another one is I'm not sure what the deliverables are on that either. That was another, but those are just a list of some 10 questions that I would have before I would even indicate that I want to change the playing field. Right now, we've got a relatively small JPA, and I'm not a big fan of JPAs, but this one seems to be working between the two counties. We got Supervisor Metzenfeld chairing now, and I suppose the chairmanship flips back and forth between supervisors in the desert out here, and that's probably the best way to get something done. I don't know. I'm not saying that this is something we would never do. I'm just saying this isn't the moment to do it. It is a huge area. It's got too many unanswered questions, a lot of which are individuals that are outside of this region, whether it's the state or the federal government. They have to come into play in this thing. And as I indicated in my second email, not for publication, but I'm concerned about one of the major players in this too, one of the major personalities in this as well. So I would ask that we not commit to this at this time. At best, maybe one staff person might participate, but I'd prefer a lot more paperwork coming back through us without us going anywhere, going to any meetings yet until we find out. Mr. McKeckren sits on the JPA. He has a lot more direct access to that information, and I don't see anybody else needing to go and do something outside of the scope of that JPA at this, at this point in time. So I would urge you not to indicate an interest in this until more comes at us. Right?
Well, interestingly enough, Mike, you and I agree on a lot of, a lot of the points you've brought up. I think there's some, some things that need to be pointed out here. Number one, I, it is my position, and I believe the position of this council, that if, if in fact we were to work with Metro and Caltrans, that if they were not to include the segment from the 15 to the 18, this is a no-go. It will never move. It will not get off the ground. It's, it's impossible to get done. And I think that message has been sent loud and clear by both the city of Victorville and Town of Apple Valley, because we've been working together for several years on, on this project. The, the High Desert Corridor has been at the table with the, with Desert Express. Desert Express has even written and provided their support and idea of the concept. I think what, what you're, you're missing out on here and all the information that you want to see would come as a result of those meetings and an agreement coming back for this council to even consider. If at that time it doesn't make any sense, and again, if the segment from the 15 to the 18 is not included, I won't vote for it. But I want to at least explore that. I would ask the council to allow staff to explore that. I think that, you know, bringing Metro, MTA into the process along with Caltrans gives us our best possibility at actually seeing this thing built in my lifetime. Several years ago, there was an article in the paper about Victorville committing 220 million to this project. I can guarantee you, if you ask staff right now, that that 220 million is nowhere near on, on the horizon. And so if we want to actually see this thing built and we can do it through a public-private partnership and get it authorized prior to whoever our next governor is, then we can actually see this thing go. And so all I would ask is, and Mike, all of your concerns are very well justified, and I would, I would strongly urge staff to take that into account as we, as we have these meetings, to hopefully come to an agreement. Although I sit on the, the JPA, I would have no issue with involving you, Mike, in those meetings. I think it would, it would be beneficial to have two council members at those meetings. I would hope that Apple Valley, their staff and two council members would be represented at those meetings. Maybe not every meeting, but, but at least some of the serious discussions that, that go on, because we need to make sure that everything that has gone on between Victorville and Apple Valley to this point is maintained and is, is included in whatever agreement that comes forward. Short of that, you know, I won't be supportive of it. So I think you and I are on the same page on a lot of these issues. All I think this is asking for is some direction from this council to give staff the opportunity to at least explore the idea. If at the end of the day it doesn't make any sense, they'll come back, they'll tell us, or even if, even if there is an agreement that, that is put before us, we'll still have the opportunity to vote it up or down. And that's, you know, from my perspective, that's all that I think staff is asking for. That's what I would ask this council to consider.
I have a question for Sean. If, if we proceeded with our own project the way we, we have, including Apple Valley, and what would happen to this other project? How would, how would it ever tie into?
That's a very good question, Mr. Mayor, but probably it hasn't been said tonight, but our project is stopped at this point in time. Caltrans District Eight Director has indicated that he is not reviewing any more of the documents that we are submitting. So we are at a standstill.
Well, I don't, I agree with, with what Ryan said, and I think you have a list of like 10 conditions, includes, Apple Valley is included in that, and having a city representative on that JPA is a mother, I can't remember exactly.
Yes, there was a, in the existing JPA, the, the language is not very favorable to Victorville as far as getting a guaranteed seat on the board. And so, you know, that amongst other things between ourselves and Doug Robertson, there are certain items that we think need to be guaranteed if the city of Victorville were in fact to hand over the reins to another agency. We would want to remain very much involved and have our fair share say in what that final product looks like.
Who represents Caltrans?
The District Eight Director.
The individual, the staff?
Dr. Ray Wolf was the individual that I met with.
I would have a problem with opening the discussions, I guess that's what you're asking for. But those conditions that were mentioned here, you know, especially Apple Valley's, needs to be in there.
We, we did have a meeting with Dr. Wolf and also Doug Failing from Metro to understand where they were coming from. And I guess the subtlety of it is that the project that the city of Victorville has has a different purpose and need to the project that Metro and District Eight, District Seven are contemplating, and they overlap. They overlap on the portion between Route 395 and Interstate 15. The federal rules basically indicate that that is not something that's acceptable. It appears to be somewhat discretionary, but the discretion goes to the District Eight Director, Dr. Wolf, and he has indicated that until there is a resolution to this conflict, he's not reviewing any more of the documents that the city of Victorville is submitting. We have asked the question why we can't dovetail the two together, and we're being told that that just can't be done. We're not really clear on the rationale behind it, but we don't have control over it. Apparently, the discretion lies with the District Eight Director.
Any comments from?
Mr. Mayor, council, we, staff has had several meetings in addition to the JPA that has their meetings, and I think that all of the points that have been, mentioned have been discussed, a lot of agreement, a lot of concern. We've worked very closely with Apple Valley because the discussion that started very, very early. I think it's important to remember that the city of Victorville, when they started this very, very early, this was a primary road to SCLA, 395 to I-15, and later it developed into the E220, and it developed there because of not only the need, but just because of the growing desert. Apple Valley has also a need, and we've discussed with Apple Valley different routing that are necessary, and the Fauchan interchange was discussed about 10 years ago, maybe even before then, with Apple Valley for the extension through Apple Valley to provide direct freeway access to Apple Valley. So this project has been going on for, for a long, long time. And initially, when, when it received the designation of the E220, the federal designation is a high priority corridor from the federal government, and, and MTA was involved, we felt that this was good in that we would work together and move forward and probably have a better chance of receiving funding. Somewhere along the way, as Sean, as our city engineer mentioned, Sean McGlade, Dr. Wolf determined that this should be combined and not overlap, and therefore we should relinquish what we had done so they could apply for the funds and move forward on that. We have tried to strategize as best as we can, considering every conceivable situation and formula on what would be the best results for Victor Valley, Town of Apple Valley and Victorville, and Victorville. And the Town of Apple Valley, Victorville, and the Victor Valley, it's all the same, and that is that this project needs to be built, this project needs to occur, it's going to be extremely expensive, and it's going to be difficult because we do not think, and I think Dr. Wolf and Doug Failing both have mentioned this, it simply will not occur without the private-public partnership. It can't occur because of the huge amount of money that's available. Things have changed substantially, and I think what brought this to a head is when our project was stopped. It's pretty dramatic, but, but I think Dr. Wolf felt very strongly about that. As a result of his actions of not to stop the reviews, this has caused the meetings, and so we're currently meeting. We have to meet, and we're meeting to find solutions, but on the same time, the council has to be apprised of all the things that have occurred, and although this isn't a decision on the direction, it would be a decision to allow staff to meet and consider alternatives and bring the matter back to the council, because we're getting into areas that are council policy and staff feels that we're a little bit handcuffed at the table to proceed with the discussions that we have had without the city council being made publicly aware that these things are occurring. They need to be a part of it. They need to be a part of, they need to be aware that the staff is in these meetings, that it's extremely serious. We do believe that we need to continue moving as quickly as possible, and there may be good news that would come out of this, or there may be news that does not give a guarantee Victorville, Apple Valley, a seat at the table. We believe the way the JP is written at the Lancaster-Pondville does have a guaranteed seat. We have as much at stake, a certainly equal amount, and we think there needs to be a modification or clarification by policy to the JPA for some of these issues. We think that can occur. In fact, we think that the climate is right for a lot of negotiations, and it may be in our interest to sit at the table and negotiate those. If it doesn't turn out, obviously staff is not authorized to make changes without coming back to the council, and you would do so. We wouldn't move without council authority, but we do need to, I think it's important to the Victor Valley, I think it's important to Victorville, SCLA, certainly Apple Valley, Victorville, that we continue and press hard and make sure that all of these issues that have been raised, which are, by the way, they're the same concerns that all individuals that look at the Victorville portion and the Apple Valley-Victorville portion are raising. And so the council seems to be cued in very, very good on what the issues are, and it's probably a good time to, to have some good negotiations regarding those issues.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add just a little bit more color and clarification. Mr. Gingler and I, as well as Mr. Miller in the back and Mr. Henderson from Apple Valley, attended a meeting at Metro's offices probably two months ago now, I suppose, maybe six weeks. And just to clarify, Dr. Wolf indicated at that meeting, and I know he's had subsequent meetings with, with Mr. McGlade, very specifically about Victorville's project, but he indicated at that meeting that he had stopped work, stopped reviewing work for essentially both projects because of this conflict. Conflict is probably too strong a word, but in essence, there is that overlap, and at this point, he is uncomfortable spending his staff time, state dollars, on reviewing anything until there is a decision made by the JPA, by the city, by Caltrans, by whomever needs to make it, on what project is going to move forward, whether it's our project only, their project only, or some combination of the two. So we aren't exactly single doubt. He says as long as there's competing projects, he's not going to do any reviews on either. I don't have any independent knowledge that he actually has, but that's what he stated in the meeting. And then just one other point, having to do with, with the public-private partnership. The initial determination, the Metro hired, has hired a firm to study the PPP, and their initial determinations are that the logical terminus for the PPP could not be 395, because there wasn't a business reason to get from 395 to 18, but there's absolutely a business reason to get from 395, or excuse me, from 14, from 14 to 15, but not from 14 to 395, and that it didn't make sense from a public-private partnership standpoint. And that, that's where the overlap comes in, and that's kind of where they're, where they're headed with that. Now, there is significant discussion. In fact, Mr. Wolf and Mr. Failing both came out to SCLA and took a tour, and one of the issues that was brought up, one of our concerns that we raised, was that where would this toll road start? Because we believed that if it started east of SCLA, that we would have a problem with essentially trucks and other traffic taking surface streets in order to avoid, you know, the first toll booth since SCLA was so close, only four miles from, from I-15. And those fears sort of were alleviated very quickly when Mr. Failing noticed the Federal Bureau prisons, and knowing full well that there's no way we're going to have a toll between I-15 and the Bureau prisons, so that gets us to essentially the east gate of SCLA. So that problem has been resolved without even any negotiation whatsoever.
Just to add one other comment off of that, and that the best way to, to slow us down is to take the holistic view and then begin to grind the whole project to that pace. We've got ours teed up now. Whether the money is there or not, as it was a few years ago, or at least was looking like it was going to be, and we could get our piece in play, I agree that there isn't going to be that money there in the next five years, but I don't think there's any going to be any growth in development, and this project isn't going to get off the ground for a decade. So I still say that this is premature, and I'd rather us not do that, but, you know, that's why you have five people in a council.
Well, I would like someone to entertain a motion that we, all staff's recommendation, I guess, to enter negotiations, none binding with all those conditions that we have, including Apple Valley. If they can't do that, then we just can't go forward.
Well, I made the motion. I know John's seconding it. I would just reiterate that not only the points that are in the staff report, but also to incorporate those concerns that have been brought forth here tonight from both Councilmember Rothschild as well as myself, because I want to make sure that, that if, if an agreement does come back, it includes all of those elements. Otherwise, there's no reason to bring an agreement back.
Counsel reports, and I'll start here with Mr. Rothschild.
Yes, Monday, we had our Mojave Desert Air Quality Management District meeting. We did have a presentation by the company that was doing the solar mirrors, the 4,000-acre project out there near the, the state line, and they made a progress report. And then, so I took that opportunity at the end of the meeting. Supervisor Metzenfeld had made the meetings by that time, and so I was glad he was there because my comments were directed, directed him. I said I thought that the Laffco hearings was a terrible mistake and an injury to the Victor Valley, and that a reconsideration would really be a, a nice thing, but I don't know if that's legally possible with the Laffco hearings, but there was no reason given, and even as his explanations when he made them after I'd finished my comments, there were still no reasons why Hellendale needed to expand their sphere of influence from 100 square miles to 200 square miles, budding Barstow.
their sphere of influence from 100 square miles to 200 square miles, abutting Barstow, running a sphere of influence spike strip to the 15, blocking Victorville off from any future growth, and intruding on SCLA. I made all those points again, and I said, said it to the board. There were 13 members on the board, several, a couple of supervisors are on our board as well, and making a point that this is an injury that's going to affect this valley in the future. And everybody has a, has a dog in this hunt, I'll tell you, whether it's Apple Valley or Hesperia and other communities, and Barstow. And I mentioned that the Barstow mayor that was on the, on our air quality board. So this is, is a bad decision. There is no rational thought as to why LAFCO allowed Hellendale's application to proceed. It should have been rejected, said later date. If a development comes along and it fits into your sphere or your ability to deliver those services, do it at that time. Leave it in the county. Don't put it in their sphere. But what have we got? We've got the largest political entity in the, in the entire county, 6,000 people in an unincorporated area of Hellendale that have extraordinary influence over the land use decisions affecting the High Desert now. It's true, a special district like that does not make those decisions, only counties and cities do, but that doesn't matter. You've nailed down the coffin when you've put that sphere of influence there. It's still not too late, I'm hoping. One other member on the board did ask Mr. Metzenfeld if reconsideration or changing that decision is possible, and he didn't say no, he didn't say yes. He just simply said, well, as time goes on, it becomes more difficult. I mentioned that, excuse me, that Victorville and Atlanta are already working for changes in the sphere and, and territory that each is in each community as we speak now. So a sphere of influence isn't 100% guaranteed. Yes, does the law allow for that change? Yes, it does. I think there's 400,000 people in the Victor Valley and Barstow area that ought to look at this LAFCO decision carefully, and at least for the time being, crank up the pressure and anybody they can get their telephone on and say, rescind that Hellendale expansion of that sphere of influence. There's no reason why it doesn't affect anything at this time, except their feelings. And I think there's something more in play, important in play here than that. So again, I'm not going to let this go. This is wrong. And if it comes down to election time, then again, I'll be reminding people again how, how detrimental this decision from LAFCO is. And right now, Mr. Metzenfeld is the chairman of LAFCO.
I have none. We'll adjourn the meeting, and we'll go into closed session.
Mr. Mayor, I think I need to announce the closed session items.
Absolutely.
Thank you. There are four items on the city council closed session agenda. The first item is regarding anticipated litigation. We are at the point where, based upon existing facts and circumstances, we believe a point has reached where we are, where the city is facing significant exposure to litigation. That matter is being brought to you pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9, subsection B3A. That's one matter. The next matter is conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation, being brought to you pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9A. The name of the case is City of Victorville versus I-15 Victorville LLC et al. That is San Bernardino County Superior Court Case CIVVS-1002136. The next matter is conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation. That's being brought to you pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9A. The name of that case is City of Victorville versus JUE et al. That's J-U-E. It is case number, San Bernardino County Superior Court Case Number CIVVS-807044. And the final item on the closed session agenda is conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation. That is the initiation of litigation pursuant to subdivision C of Section 54956.9 of the Government Code, and that is one case. At the conclusion of the closed session, if there is any reportable action on any of these items, we will report those back out.
Thank you.
There was no reportable action.